All right, I'm calling the meeting to order at six P M and um we're looking at the June twelfth twenty twenty four minutes if you would. Does anybody have anything they'd like to say about them? Did you all get them in the original um email from Cindy or did you get them today?
Cause I didn't.
I got them today, yeah.
Yeah.
I got them today.
Yeah, I didn't get my.
I am so sorry about that. I did them Saturday night here at home on my laptop. My cat was helping me and I that's what I get for doing them from seven to nine o'clock at night.
I wonder why I got them.
Well, I got them.
Oh, Ginger got them too. Okay.
I did.
Yeah.
It's just women are efficient.
I do have one question about them.
Yes, George.
And the question is, uh, since I wasn't there, I want to know what happened at the very end of the minutes. It says meeting adjourned at six forty one P M. And then Bob Smith asked for motion to adjourn and then meeting adjourned at six fifty eight P M. So it adjourned twice. And there's seventeen minutes unaccounted for.
Oh, my goodness.
Okay, so what happened? Um, so what I think happened was the meeting actually did adjourn at six fifty eight. I think the um. I'll have to go back to review the recording and correct this.
Well, uh, you know, I do remember that what happened, I believe Ginger at that point.
Oh, yes.
Asked about whether we should begin meeting in a hybrid fashion. So we kind of.
Right.
For a few minutes.
It's all my fault.
No, it's not your fault.
Well, as long as you weren't all talking about me behind my back during those seventeen minutes.
Can everybody see me or am I just?
No.
No, we. I know, that's the thing. I let me try. Ah, can you see me?
No, you're just a disembodied voice.
And this is awful. Let me go to the bottom again, because I said and now it's not going to open up. Well, if I don't make it this time. Yeah, I have. I have a black square with a little head in it that's white. And I said, that's that's not me. But I guess I'm for whatever. Oh, wait, here we go up here. Maybe I will. Get it now. Participants, oh, shoot. Let's see. Nope. That's just participants. I don't know. Well, I'll leave it and maybe you will see me um. Next time. Participants, start video.
Yeah, start video.
Start video.
Okay, wait a minute. If I can get it to come up again. Okay, there I am.
There you are.
Okay, I have a few comments in the minutes. Uh, there's a discussion of. The uh. Fire uh alarm pull boxes and how it says one sentence, we're using the uh electrical. Project uh ARPA funds and then the the next sentence is we're using uh. I forget some other some other accounts to pay for the funds. Uh, I think we need to be specific there what we're doing. It sounds like we're paying twice or or. Whatever I I think uh it should say that we're paying uh from the electrical. Improvement project, the remaining balance of what nine hundred ninety five dollars and the remaining balance. The remaining amount to pay for the uh fire pull boxes will come out of the. Uh, I forget what account it says that we're using it. Think we needed a distinction, otherwise it's sounds like we're. I don't know, paying for two accounts. Well, we are paying two accounts, but there's no no dollar figure.
Okay, so that would be on the the um the paragraph that begins with Bob Klenger discussed the estimated receipt.
Yeah.
Okay, um, so.
I don't have that out in front of me here now, but.
Alright, so the estimate for pull stations is eighteen forty six. There are funds. It says there are funds still available from ARPA funds. To help cover the costs. So Cindy, we need to insert um how much um. Was left in those ARPA funds and we'll we'll put that figure as. X number of dollars to be used from ARPA funds. And then I do not remember. Where we said we were going to get the rest with. Did we say out of state aid?
I believe that's where it's going to come from. So I've um. So I'll change the sentence to there are seven hundred and fifty dollars. Available in ARPA funds from electrical upgrades. To help cover the cost of installing the post stations. The remaining balance will be paid out of state aid.
Does that work, Fred?
Okay, yes. Then then I think then we talk about. Other projects that were ongoing, I think Bob Klenger was was talking about him and we discussed what funds. With the dollar amounts and what funds would come from what accounts and and which year's budget or or ARPA funds or whatever. I guess I don't see any of that discussion in the minutes. Bob, did did you talk about that at the last meeting?
Right, we talked about um, hold on.
Hi, Bob.
Sorry, I'm running late, everybody. Um. Let me get back to. Where did it go? Hold on. Uh, there we are. Um. Well, then the next one was um the estimate from Foster Farrar to install a panic bar, and I'm just reading from the minutes now.
Right.
Uh, panic bar on the fire exit in. Fire exit door in the basement. Foster Farrar will also replace the closers on the fire doors, the rotunda and the deuterium. Funds are still available in the ARPA funds for replacement of fire door to be to cover the panic bar. Estimate for this is seven hundred and fifty nine. The estimate for new closers is blank, so we need to fill that in. That I think was uh, I can go back and find it. Um. Um, motion made to accept the estimate uh and then the roll call vote.
But didn't you also talk about the the brickwork?
And then mason masonry by Rich Cooper will be coming by on Monday to do chimney repairs. Repairs are being paid with ARPA funds for chimney window repairs.
Okay.
So. Talked about talked to, I mean, talked about that, talked a little bit about the ceiling. But at that point, we didn't know because um it hadn't been voted on yet. We hadn't, we hadn't had the town meeting.
Okay.
So from what I'm seeing um. Going back in, hold on a second, let me uh. I can grab the estimate here real quick. If my computer. I don't think it likes traveling.
I've got the, I've got it, Bob.
Okay. It was around twelve hundred dollars, I thought, for the floor closer.
It's loading um. It was. Seven hundred fifty nine ninety six for the um door closers. And then the whole thing kept.
Because remember there was, I don't know where we put, there's a service call in there that needs to be lumped into one of them.
Right.
I received the invoices for these after the meeting. So the invoice for the door closers was one thousand one hundred ninety nine dollars and some fifty three cents, I believe. And that's the one that they put the service call on to for the door. Closers.
Okay, so how much how much uh was left in the um fire door?
So the fire door fund, we had seven hundred and fifty nine dollars. That bill was a little over eight hundred dollars, so fourteen dollars. Came out of um F Y twenty four's maintenance budget to cover the difference for the panic bar.
Okay, and then the closers?
That the closers came out of, we paid for the closers out of state aid.
Okay. So that should be, we need to put a figure in there. For the closers.
Okay, one thousand. One hundred ninety nine dollars.
Fifty three cents.
Okay.
Okay.
Cindy.
So. Does that cover it seven fifty nine ninety six? Um. It should reflect the ninety six cents there up above one line up and then one on nine fifty three. Okay. So it was actually less than their original estimate because we got rid of the um. Peaks and.
Right, because they keyed it to fit the library key.
Okay. Does that work, Fred?
Yes, that's fine with me, yeah.
Okay. Is there anything else about the minutes that we need to amend? We now have to um. Cindy, what do we have to do? We have to print the minutes out and you and I have to both sign them and then you have to. Do the printed copy to the.
No, I can um, I scan it and then send it over to town offices. And that's part of the reason the format was different this month compared to previous months when I've been doing them is. This is the format that all the other town departments are using when they do their meeting minutes so that we're in compliance.
Okay.
This is our our new meeting minute format.
Okay, so you will let me know when um. The minutes are ready for my signature?
Yes, I will.
Okay, and then I can scoot up there. Uh, okay, is there anything else you'd like to talk about in terms of the minutes?
No. Can I just ask the question of, we will get a a um. A new copy?
I can send a new copy.
How about if we um, when you, when we've signed it and you are are ready just to um. Send it to the town office, send everybody a copy.
Okay.
And now that way you'll have the official copy if you so desire. Okay?
All right.
All right, so now um I need a motion to accept the minutes of June twelfth as amended.
I'll make a motion.
There's a, there's a second. Okay, so it's any final discussion? If not, we'll proceed to a vote. Deborah?
Yes, accept.
Ginger?
Yes, accept.
George?
Yes.
Fred?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Okay, so they are accepted as amended. Thank you, Cindy, and now.
Awesome.
Now uh we're on to finance report. Bob, I know that's been problematic, so. Nothing new?
Uh, nothing new from my end, no.
Okay, and um well, we're just beginning the new uh fiscal year anyway, so that um. We're starting with a fresh slate. Cindy does have uh news about how much was left in the budget and we've encumbered it. Which was thirteen. Hundred something?
Yeah, I think it was like thirteen, one thousand three hundred and eighty three dollars or so.
Now, when you, when you went to encumber it, you had to uh encumber it to something, yes?
Yeah, so I encumbered it to two different vendors because. I have not um. Received the invoice yet from Garibanta for when they came out to do the lift inspection, which is one thousand two hundred dollars. And I'm also waiting for an invoice from Fire Technologies Incorporated because it's going to be a service call for having their technician come out. The day of the lift inspection. Oh, and Pete, our new town administrator is joining us. So I encumbered it to the two um twelve hundred for the Garibanta invoice and the remaining balance to go towards. Our um invoice from. Fire Technologies. And as long as it, even if the invoice is um. As long as the funds are encumbered, they'll be paid our F Y twenty four.
Okay, and you've you've done the encumbrance before the deadline, which was the fifteenth, correct?
I passed it in today.
Excellent, okay. Does that satisfy everyone? In terms of that, I think it's pretty good with a eighty plus thousand dollar budget that we um. Managed to get that close to zeroing it out. That's uh.
Oh, that's, those two invoices will zero us out, so unfortunately, there is no additional funds to encumber to purchase.
Yeah.
Anything additional.
Well, we're already in the new fiscal year, so that we.
Yes.
Yeah, Bob.
Well, I just wanted to say thanks to Cindy for handling that. Um, and getting us through the end of the year. I was hoping to play more of a role in that. Um, I will be back sometime around the end of the month and if Jim is feeling well enough. I will get with him and I will get with Cindy and I will get with um. Dara is her name, right?
Yeah, Dara, yeah.
And and I will um begin to update Jim's. Spreadsheets and get that happening again. My plan is with the August. You know, next month's. Trustees meeting, so.
Okay, that sounds good. Thanks, Bob. Um, direct director's report, you're on, Cindy.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Was there, was there another question? I'm sorry.
I have a quick question. We're talking about the finance report. Uh, is. Is is the responsibility, I guess, is to the of that finance report and tracking it is a trustee or is it our library director? Who's responsible for tracking the finances for the library?
According, uh, it's my understanding that Cindy is in charge of of um. Maintaining the budget. Um, but Jim always did a report to keep us. Um, because if you look at Dara's report, it's pages and pages and pages and lines and lines and lines and lines and lines and you really have to fish. To find what you're looking for and Jim used to just summarize it so we knew clearly. Um, where we were with all of our um special funds, where we were with each of our um line items. And I appreciated that clarity. So I guess that that was something that Jim did. Uh, extra and um we all liked it and I was hoping that we could somehow continue it after Jim left the trustees.
But does does the director do the same thing or can she do the same thing?
I have been doing the same thing. I have my Excel, I have an Excel spreadsheet myself, so. For example, today, when I did the F Y twenty five, I went in and subtracted. Out the expenses that I submitted today for payroll and the invoices that had to come through for collection development and. Maintenance and so I keep track myself on an Excel spreadsheet. And I always reconcile it with Dara's when she sends hers out.
So if you're already doing that, I guess, then maybe my question is, why is Bob gonna do it or why does Bob need to do it? Is he gonna tell us anything different? Other than Jim liked to do it, so I don't know. Are we duplicating effort?
Think there's some duplication. Um, I don't mind having a double check and it's no comment on Cindy. To me, it's just two sets of eyes looking at the same thing. If we end up with the same numbers, I think there's a lot of confidence in that. If we don't end up with the same numbers and. And I, what I am hesitant to do is ask Cindy to do one more thing. And take that and put it into a spreadsheet different from what she's already using. Now. I don't want to speak for you, Cindy, but by the same token, I'm. In conversation, conversations I've had previously with Jim. It sounded like it was about fifteen minutes, fifteen to thirty minutes for him. Once you know where to look for Dara's stuff and you get it into the format that he had. So if that's what it entails, I'm happy to do that. And then that can be, as long as it ties out with what Cindy has. Then we have sort of a duplicate set of. And if somebody comes back and says, well, what were the books? It's easy to just pull from the trustees spreadsheet and say. Here, this is, this is what we were working off of. This was, you know, running concurrently with what the director had and it. It was basically the same kind of books. So it, does that make sense? Am I, am I duplicating work?
I I, as a non-savvy financial, not knowing much about finances. I've always been very grateful in my brief time on the board to get Jim's and also yours. Sort of translation of what's what the bottom line is and what we should really be thinking about, looking about what's in. Uh, well, I'm grateful to.
And the other, the other piece of what Jim's covered that that I, I don't know if Cindy. I think Cindy needs to be aware of it, but I don't know that she needs to track it is all that whole second sheet. Of the special funds and the different accounts that we can draw from that are. We are trustees of.
Right.
It's not that Cindy doesn't need to know. Yeah, it's not that Cindy doesn't need to know, you know, doesn't, she needs to know about those, but I think those are ours. Especially that second sheet is is what we're entrusted to do. Look after the library and as part of that, the finances.
I agree. I'd like to see, I'd like to see it continue. That's just my opinion.
Okay, I just raising a question is make us work.
No, I've thought that. Fred, I've thought the same question myself, because I I would rather not make work if I don't have to do one more thing. But I'm happy to do it and and once I'm back, I'm happy to go check on Jim. I hope he's, I don't want to. Gossip while we're recording, but I hope he's doing. So.
Okay, continue.
Yeah, Jim was at the town meeting um with Katie, so and he stayed through the whole thing, so.
Good.
Okay, uh, and now we're on to director's report.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chair. I did invite Pete Kane, our new town administrator, to join us tonight just so he could introduce himself. To everyone and just sit in on the meeting. So thank you for joining us, Pete. Um, a few things that did come up um. Today, M L S came and we did the accessibility project video recording.
How'd that go?
It went really well. Um, they asked good questions and good follow up and they were really interested in. The building and took some really good pictures and they're going to let me know when it's available to preview. And then where they're gonna post it. And then I have a funding request and I don't know if you want me to ask of that now or wait till new business.
Cindy, how about if you just take a minute to to inform the board of um the visitor that we had a couple weeks ago?
Who did we have a couple weeks ago to visit?
Uh, someone who uh left advice for us in terms of compliance with ADA?
Oh, yes, yes.
About that as a group.
That is true. I I, okay, so this would have happened. I was at the library. I and. Carol was working and this was a random patron, first time visiting the Whately Public Library. She started walking around. She started asking Carol questions. Such as where is the bathroom? And Carol says, oh, it's downstairs and. She's tried to try to engage Carol in a conversation with, oh, it really should be upstairs. And Carol's like, well, we have our lift right here to use. So she finished turning around the library. And then I came upstairs. I I don't know if this was the same day that we had our community input meeting, so I was downstairs or I was. Anyways, I came up from downstairs for whatever I was doing downstairs. And she came back to the desk as she was getting ready to leave and Carol happened to mention, oh, our Cindy, who's our director, she's here. So I went out to the desk and she introduced herself as Betsy. And she, the way she represented herself to me, so that it was a misrepresentation that she was actually. An agent working through the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Office of Disability. The five ten um compliances to make sure we were ADA compliant. So she gave me um, I gave her tour of how the lift worked and where the bathrooms were and then. She said, oh, you're really good. However, she went on to tell us that the lift is not in compliance. Because we don't have bars that go from where the railing of the lift ends. Across that section of the stairs to where the first black railing is. For the ramp. And I'm like, I'm I'm I didn't under, I said, I'm sorry, I didn't, you know, I didn't know. Have any information to give her at the time. I said I would pass the information on to my board of trustees. She. Sent a lengthy email that I then forwarded to. Bob and I did my own research and found out that she's not. An actual representative of any Commonwealth of Massachusetts agency on any ADA compliance issues. She's a random patron who lives in Turner's Falls, who goes into Carnegie Library a lot about their accessibility. She, I, through doing my research, I also found out that she every two weeks is also emailing. The Office of Compliance in Greenfield about the Greenfield Public Library, the brand new. Multi, you know, expensive. ADA compliant Greenfield Public Library because she doesn't feel that it's a perfect. ADA compliant building, but you're never going to get a perfect ADA compliant building. And so. That was our visitor.
And I just, when I looked at it and spoke with Cindy, um, my opinion. Uh, and Pete, if you're listening, you can uh chime in on it. Is that we have a certificate of occupancy. We have an inspection each year by the building inspector. We have passed with flying colors all the time. Um, therefore, I believe we are in compliance. And um, I don't know what else to say, Bob.
The only other suggestion I had um to Bob and to Cindy was um. We're really not in a position to say much. If there's an issue, this needs to be raised with the building inspector.
Correct.
That's the person we deal with. That's the person who understands the codes. That's who the person who directs us what we need to do. Um, as Bob mentioned, we have a certificate of occupancy, which allows us and patrons to be in the building. Um. If there's an issue, so I I talked to Cindy about if there's an issue in the future. Um, this person, we appreciate their input. And we can discuss their concerns, um, but their input really needs directed to the Franklin County Regional. Council of Government.
Right.
Permit Agency up in Greenfield.
And I don't, I don't mean to minimize, you know, the the perhaps the goodness of of her intentions, et cetera, et cetera. It it's just that I suppose anyone could walk in and say, you need to do this and you need to do that. Um, as long as we have the C O and as long as we have um the building inspectors um. Visit each year and we are compliant. Um, we need to hear from him and his office. Um, if we're not in compliance. I agree a hundred percent.
But also, this woman misrepresented her credentials.
She didn't have any credentials.
She had no, she implied credentials.
Impressed.
That's how it came across that she was a representative of the Massachusetts. The, you know, a dis uh disability representing, yes.
Okay, well, I mean, the Bobs are absolutely correct. We deal with this on the zoning board all the time. She could have been welcome to the library and told to contact the building inspector.
I have not heard back from her, but if she does respond back, I will say, here's the contact information for. The building inspector there, your next step in the.
Franklin County, yep.
S S.
Okay, I just want, wanted you all to be informed that that had occurred.
Wow.
Yeah, yeah. Go ahead, Cindy.
Okay, so then. I have a funding request and I don't know if you want me to ask that of you now or wait till we get to new business.
That should probably be new business.
Okay. And then um. We had the lift inspection done on the twenty sixth of June and I was not aware until. The building inspector got there and the. Service technician from Garibanta that we also needed to have. The representative from the Fire Technologies be there because there is a fire alarm in the shaft. And he has to be in front of the building inspector with his plunger. Set off the alarm so that the building inspector knows it works.
So you'll you'll need to um uh add that into our budget.
Already, oh, into the budget, okay.
Into the budget for the future.
I thought you're gonna say the building because it's already there.
No, but um uh we need to have that included in the, we weren't aware that that we were supposed to have.
I I was totally shocked when they asked me where the tech was. I'm like, what do you mean? Where is the technician? They just came and did their inspection. Oh, no, he needs to be here to set off this one up here in the. The lift shaft with his plunger thing, device.
Okay.
All right, that's all I have. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right, circulation numbers look really good.
They do. We actually on Monday, we had um. And drop in play group, so our numbers are gonna look good in July too. And people are coming in. And using the library, especially on these really hot days, especially the children's room and the books are going out in stacks.
That's great.
That's very good.
Right.
Yeah, and I just wanted to um to give kudos to my former student and former colleague, Tim Guy from Frontier Regional, who came in on Saturday. The twenty second and did a really wonderful presentation on Juneteenth. Um. Uh, there were four of us there and it was really, really good. Um, I was really, of course, I'm proud of him. But um he did a really nice job. I was, I told him that we should make him our resident historian.
And I learned things that I didn't know about either.
Yep. Great PowerPoint and uh some wonderful handouts and uh just a really good background um that he has, because he's. Um, really quite a, quite a good teacher. So I just wanted to put a plug in for Tim. So I just wanted to put a plug in for Tim to congratulate him.
Cindy, did you want to talk about the, the, the review of the of the survey?
Oh, yes, George, Deborah and I met and went over our strategic fan surveys and I did mill out. So all of you can see the responses, which for the most part are very positive. Um, as you can see from the responses that are most of our, are pretty much. Ninety percent of our patients are feel comfortable and welcoming, uh, welcome when coming to the library and that they're. You know, use it several times a month.
Cindy, you emailed those results?
I I thought I mailed them. I'm sorry, I thought I mailed them out on Monday.
Email Cindy?
Email on Monday.
I definitely didn't get that.
Okay, I am so sorry. I will email them to all of you after the meeting. Um, but overall, the results were pretty good, very positive responses. Um, if patrons responded why they didn't use our library, it's because maybe it's closer to where they work or. They have children that go to school in a different town. Um, but they mostly are using local libraries such as Tilton, Forbes, Meek and Sunderland. Um. How, uh, three responders said they don't use the library because they're not big readers. And then programming, um, live music received the most responses. Author nature and science visits were tied for thirty one. Arts and crafts came in third at thirty. Um, readings came in for twenty nine, yoga exercise eighteen. Um, eight response, eight, um, people responded they'd like to see some type of technology program. And for number five, the response that received the most answers was more open hours for twenty eight responses. Um, and a library of things received twenty one responses, so that was our second, um. Improvement or program that respondents would like to see. Uh, ten patrons would like to see a more diversified collection and less of the Danielle Steels and the. Um, out, uh, Daniel Stills and the Ellen Hillebrand's and the. Other romancy type novels. Um, and then I realized that there's a marketing opportunity in here because eight patients responded around. More downloadable material, so there's an opportunity to. Get the word out about Libby and that with your CW Mars card, you can access Libby, which then allows you to download. Any book throughout the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, any audio book if it's available, any periodical and you're not just limited to CW Mars, it's. All of the libraries in Massachusetts, so that's gonna be something that I'm gonna. Come up with to like send out in our August newsletter, just a little did you know? And put in the information about Libby as a downloadable option.
Maybe also you and I talked the other day about, um, maybe, uh, on one of the evenings that were open. We should have a sort of a.
Drop in.
How to use, how to use the library's technologies.
Yeah.
And.
Yeah, I mean, yes. That was one of the things that patrons would like to see, um. More collaboration with the, such as the Historical Society and Valley Neighbors and. As Deborah, George and I were talking, that can just easily be cross posting of events. If Valley Neighbors is having something, we can offer to host it at the library. We can also. Promote it at the library to let people, you know, patrons know it's happening. And that can be a way to start our collaboration. Um, genealogy, more nature arts and crafts programs seem to be the answer for both adult and. Children's programming, um, senior programming, again, the how to use technology. And again, some of it is just if Valley Neighbors is doing something, we can help. Co-host by having it at the library or just cross, um, promotion of it. So all in all, the surveys turned out we got sixty nine altogether and they weren't so bad.
And it does give direction, um, to for putting, um, sentences into various spots in the, um. Document uh, to address those concerns. And over the, over the next five years, how we will develop better use of the techno- better. Uh, townwide knowledge of or patron knowledge of uh, our available technologies, et cetera, et cetera.
Yes, and I am so sorry because I, I remember typing all these up and I thought I pressed. Send email. But I must have imagined doing that.
It's the heat, Cindy.
It's the heat, yeah.
I'm so sorry. My brain is also another year older too, so.
Um, are there any questions for Cindy for her director's? Yeah, Bob.
Um, if I may slide this in real quick on the maintenance side, Cindy, how are the mini splits holding up with the air conditioning load?
I had to, oh, that's the other thing, Rich Strong, I I'm sure I did put that in my director's report. Rich Strong has merged with, um. Another company. As of, and so I had to call them today because one of the units is leaking. And I'm waiting to hear back from them and when they can come out and find out. It could simply be that because they're working overtime because of all the heat that something's backed up somewhere and they just need to come in and. Drain it and flush out the line.
Is there a, are you collecting that leakage in a bucket or something?
Yes, and I'm not sure which unit it was, so I, since we're not gonna be there, we turned it up a little bit. Um, it's still gonna work, but it's just not gonna be as cool as if people were in the building.
Okay. Okay.
For for servicing the mini splits, uh, Carish Oil Company does that. Very, very well. I've used it in my own, for my own house. They'll come out within a day or two. You don't have to wait for weeks to get a response. If they're coming out to do other service work, well, they know the building, they live in town, so.
But don't, but we have a service contract with Rich Strong.
Correct.
Well, let me, let me say that I don't know what you call a service contract. I've talked to Rich Strong. Uh, and some of his staff, six or nine months ago, when we were talking, I don't know, about. The incentives that were available to upgrade mini splits. The service contract is every year. It it's nothing that's. That's uh, tied to the, to the installation or original installation. Of the mini splits. It's every year, there's a service that you contract with them to do. You can contract that to do with Carish Oil or anybody. You're not committed, you're not tied to Rich Strong and they're not giving you something that's part of the warranty. It's just an extra service. So I, I guess I have a difficult time understanding as part of the contract with Rich Strong when. My knowledge is not. It's an extra service that we're contracting with them to do, that anybody can do.
Okay, but there is something to be said. Rich. Knows, Rich's company knows our system. Uh, and has been responsive all the time when we've had problems. Um. I think that's worth something in the modern age.
Okay, well. I've had others that be responsive too, whether they install the system or not, they. Whatever, okay.
So noted. Okay, anything else? All right, so, uh, fire system upgrade update. Do we know anything yet about the installation of the?
The two pool stations?
Yeah.
Um, what we know is I've sent out two emails letting them know. Uh, that the funds have been approved and I have not heard anything back and I don't think you have either, Cindy.
None, I haven't gotten any.
That is correct.
Yeah, so I will, I will ping them again by email and maybe give them a call.
Okay.
And and just. Keep pushing them to get this done.
Okay, uh, panic bar, door closers, um, update, the update is that it's done.
And I submitted them on the final FY twenty four. I submitted the bill schedules to get those invoices paid today.
Yep.
Now the, one little, one little update, um, the panic bar on the basement door is all said. Um, the closers on the upstairs two doors and the downstairs two doors, the downstairs going into the duty room. Um. I looked at trying to get them to close a little more tightly, a little more securely. Uh, I believe the edging on those doors is metal. Believe it's a metal band on an old heavy wood door. Um, I'm, I'm. I'm, I'm leery of my skills, taking those doors off and being able to make them better. Um, that ought to be if, it, what I want to do is when I'm back in Mass. Um, make an appointment with JP and just have him come and take a look. Uh, and let me know what he thinks. They are closing. They are certainly closing much better than they did previously. Is it perfect? No, but given the age and condition of those basement doors and the upstairs doors, especially the one door has a little twist. I don't think we're ever gonna get them perfect.
In addition, the weather has not been on our side.
No, so it. I, 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 I don't wanna say it's acceptable because. I'm not a hundred percent familiar with what's acceptable for a seventy five year old building. Um, for these kind of doors, I want JP's opinion, but I'll get that when I get back before the next meeting.
I appreciate that.
Yeah, and I personally, I think this project is is done. Uh, unless he looks at it, we'll, I'll rely on him, but, uh. It's gonna be a lot to pull those doors off and shave them and adjust and especially the upstairs doors. Cuz the one as you're walking in, the one on the right has a really good twist and it's never gonna close solid. The top is closed, the top is closed and there's almost a half inch at the bottom. You'd have to completely rebuild that door. So, but I'll get his, I'll get his opinion.
Get his thoughts. That's a, that's a great idea. Thanks for doing that, Bob. Okay, strategic plan update, you just gave it to us, so.
Yes, and when Oscar was there today to help assist with the filming for the accessibility project. We sat down and went over and came up with an outline that I just have to type up and I can get that to you by next week.
Okay. Okay, and then we move on to updates on various repair projects. We do have some interesting news, Bob, in terms of the, uh, mason.
Yes, so Rich Cooper, when I reached out to him, um, they are going to come. On, uh, seven twenty nine. So this month still, now they can take the downspouts down. They don't think that's gonna be a big deal. They will take the downspouts down. They will get them someplace, um, safe. I am waiting for a callback or an email back from Bob Holla about repainting. Um, my plan, and I'd like to put this forward, I've talked with. Uh, Bob about this, I'd like to put it forward to the rest of the trustees. Uh, if we're doing, what's gonna happen is all the exterior bricks, any of the little cracks is gonna be replaced. And then the mason is going to seal all the exterior bricks. Um, it is sealant that meets the historical commission's requirements. Uh, it meets the, the Department of Interior, uh, requirements. For being in a historic district, so we're all up to speed there. Um, if we're doing that work. To me, it would make sense. We already have to take the downspouts off to expose all the brick. I think we should then take the gutters off, paint all the white trim. Paint everything that hasn't been painted on the library, including the columns out front, the portico, um. That's my feeling. Let's get it done, um. Call, uh, we have an estimate from, um, I think it's gutter filter that Larry Ashman had a really good. Uh, experience with. I was gonna go check with Keith Bardwell before we, we actually committed to them. Um, but get all the bricks repaired, get everything sealed, get everything painted, get. Good gutters up with some type of leaf guard filter, whatever we end up using, downspouts and then. Pretty much the exterior of the building is done. They save the roof, a flat roof in the back.
Right. And I've already, and you know that I've already submitted the estimate to the CPC, but.
Yeah.
Alan told me that we won't be, would not be able to be funded until the next, um, annual town meeting.
And I reached out to the, the roofer that gave us that estimate and have not heard back from him. Um, I just think it's crazy time for them right now. I, the question I asked when I reached out was. Um, he was up there, he looked at it. Is this something that has to happen this year or does he think we can wait? So.
Okay, so i- in terms of the, um, the brick sealer, um, the town meeting passed. Um, the money for that, um, the, uh, brick repair is three thousand five hundred and seventy five dollars. So we would need tonight to vote, um, that. To proceed and, um, where to fund it from. My suggestion is state aid. Um, because state aid gets replenished. Uh, not, it won't get fully replenished, but, um, at this point, Cindy, we had something like twelve grand in there, right?
Yes, you ever take a few dollars?
Okay, so, um, if, if that meets with your all approval. Um, that estimate was three thousand five hundred seventy five dollars from, um, Rich Cooper. And I'd like to pay that from state aid if I could have a motion and then we can discuss it. Um, is there a motion to do that?
Yes, motion to do that.
Okay, Bob moves and George seconds. Um, is there any discussion?
So really alternatives that we should be discussing, Bob, in terms of where to get that, that money from, or is that the?
Sure, I mean, um, there, we could take it out of maintenance. We have six thousand six hundred dollars in the, the new budget. Um, but of course. That means we would have two thousand and something left and that's not gonna change. Um, if we take it out of state aid, we're going to get state aid. Uh, how often do we get that, Cindy? We get X number of dollars?
They split it in half, so we get one half in the fall and then another half again in the spring.
So I just thought that that was a sensible way to do it. I'd rather avoid using, we do have a, um. Is it a Dickinson fund or, um?
We have two Dickinson funds, the Dickinson Maintenance Fund and the Dickinson Expendable Fund. Where we can spend the interest off of those and I believe it's the Dickinson Maintenance Fund, there's about thirteen thousand dollars in.
Right, but again, that's, that's, that is, once you spend it, it's gone.
Yeah.
Except the, whatever interest would accrue.
Right, that's the interest that we've earned from the original, the, from the principal.
Bob?
Okay, I, I wanna put this forward and I apologize, um, for not having a chance to get this to all the other trustees. Um, but what I've done is I've put together. A list of everything that would be considered maintenance. It's a large Excel spreadsheet. Um, I have not, I've updated a little bit, but I have not kept it current. Um, I can do that once I'm back in Massachusetts, the end of this month. I'm not sure I'll be able to get it done for the August board meeting. Um, but I should be able to do it for September, but if you look at it. Um, if we do what, we've been doing a ton of maintenance work, I agree.
Yep.
We are almost done. Barring something unforeseen happening, um, which we won't know anyway. But it's not like, it's not like we have additional items once we're done with. The sealant, the painting, the gutters. And the roof, that flat roof over the rotunda. Once we're done with that. Correct me if I'm wrong, anybody, but the, the maintenance. The only other item that would even be a yellow is the ramp, the wheelchair ramp. And that simply comes from some deterioration, some deterioration, not a ton, but some deterioration of the posts. Supporting it. But that is not an item that has to be done this year. That is something that could be put off till next year or possibly the year after. Um, what I'm trying to do is I'm, I'm, I'm trying to get as much stuff done, um. As I can right now, and then we should, uh, as part of the whole spreadsheet. Then it becomes a maintenance issue and when are things gonna come due again? So for example, the sealant will come due in ten to thirteen years. Depending on the weathering and everything else. The new roof, a new flat roof would be approximately twenty years. You know, things like that, that we can then begin to go off of the spreadsheet and take a look and say, okay, going forward. Here's what we need the budget for, here's what we, here's what we need to hold on to money so that we'll have it next year. Here's what we can spend this year, things like that. So I'm, I'm sorry, I haven't been as ahead of that as I wanted to. Um, but that's the direction I'm trying to go in, or not trying, that's the direction I'm going in. It's just a question of how long it's taking me to get there.
Do you, so do you think we shouldn't take the thirty-five seventy-five out of state aid and we should take it out of maintenance?
No, I think we should take it out of state aid. If we haven't, if we haven't, well, and part of that is just having worked in other. Organizations where money is, is segregated. Um, my understanding is if we run into something where we need money, we could shift it out of our maintenance fund. Yeah, I'd, I'd rather.
Yeah.
Do that. If, if we need to, and if we find out we don't need it, then we're getting close to the end of the fiscal year next year, eleven, you know, ten. Nine and a half, ten months from now, and we need it over in a different area. If we can move some of that money over to a different account. If we have leftovers in maintenance, then I, I think that would be easier than moving state aid, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah, state aid, I imagine has strings. More strings than our maintenance budget.
The only requirement for state aid is you cannot use it as to say. When we're preparing the budget, we cannot it, make it part of our municipal budget. State aid is given. To library directors to spend to cover any emergency, any, any anticipated costs that may have come up during. The fiscal year, or if you know you're going to overspend in your budget and you need to have things reclassified at the end of the fiscal year. You can take it out of state aid. You can use it to pay for. Um, say you wanted to pilot a program to see how additional hours would work. It could be a funding source to pay for. Additional staff to help cover those additional hours. The only thing we can't use it for is. Making it part of our annual municipal budget.
Okay, Fred?
So this work for Sealer Bridges, that's only the bricks, is only for the brickwork. We're still going to have. I would assume two separate contracts for one for painting and another one for gutters, right? And we have some idea of the cost of that and is it within our budget somewhere? I would assume we're going to try to do that before winter. I would, oh, right?
Um, yes, Bob's waiting to hear from Bob Holla.
I'm waiting to hear from Bob Holla on a painting estimate. I already have the estimate for the gutters. Um, if memory serves, it was around seventeen hundred dollars.
Okay.
And that's for the, that's for the leaf. I always forget, leaf.
Butter guard, leaf, leaf hat, I think it's called, yeah.
I, I, I forget what it was. Um, Larry Ashman had very good experience with them and they came highly recommended by him. Um, the guy, the owner of the company was in town and gave us an estimate. And I warned him that it may not happen for a year or so, and he said, that's fine, I'll, you know, unless things change drastically, this will be pretty close, so.
For those of you that are new to the board, Larry Ashman was a longtime member of the Board of Trustees, um, and he, um. Has a love for the building. Um, he's, he's done an awful lot of things on his own. Um, just because he saw that they needed to be done. So when Larry speaks, um, we listen.
Okay. Thank you for all the, I just want to say thank you to the Bobs and Cindy for that, those explanations, which are very helpful about funding sources and going, what's going forward and so forth.
Okay. Um, yep, Ginger, did you want to?
Say, I really think state aid is the way to go with this. I, I agree with that.
Okay, so we have a motion, uh, and it's been seconded to use thirty-five hundred seventy-five dollars of state aid to pay for the masonry repair work. That Rich Cooper is going to begin on the twenty-ninth of July. Um, if there's no further discussion, we can proceed to a vote. Okay, Deborah?
Yes.
Ginger?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Fred?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, all right, um, I did have one other thing under other. Um, and that is, um, I failed after the election. To uh, ask you if you wished to reorganize the leadership of the Board of Trustees, which of course is your perfect right. So I now give you that opportunity. Should you uh, wish to uh, nominate someone else to be the chair?
No, thank you.
No wish whatsoever.
Okay.
Oh, thank you.
We're so grateful for the great job you do, Bob, so.
Yes.
Fortunately.
You.
Definitely again.
I'll second the nomination.
Okay. Uh, okay, so we won't reorganize, we'll stay the way we are. Okay, so under new business, I put prioritizing repair schedules and we've kind of just talked about that, Bob, so I, I think we all have an idea that we're gonna. We're getting closer and closer to doing those projects that were really necessary. Um, we'll see what happens with the roof, um, but what is, and Bob will have more information from Bob Holla and, and we'll be, um. Keeping you abreast of all of that, okay? Um, and future programming, if you look on Cindy's report, um, she had that there. Cindy, you want to say anything more about programming? She and I talk often about other kinds of things, um, I, I really wanted to, uh, I don't know exactly what the night sky looks like, um. In the back of the library at night, I'm not sure that UMass or whatever doesn't light it up too much, but I was thinking that it might be wonderful on some. You know, when there's some spectacular celestial event to have an evening, we could even uh, get uh, maybe get a permit for a campfire afterwards and. Uh, you know, have some really nice evening out under the stars, um. But anyways.
I'll make sure tonight Steve's available to bring over the fire pit.
Okay.
And, and you can also involve Samores, which I understand has drawn great crowds to library events whenever Samores are there.
Yes, yes.
Do we, Cindy, do we have a local resource that's a, an expert in the sky?
I am not sure I can reach out and find out.
Okay.
I'm not an expert, but I can speak from personal experience. Um, in the summertime, it's much better star viewing when UMass is powered down considerably.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so. It's still bright and Northampton, it competes with Northampton a bunch in the sky, but. It's nowhere near as bright as when the students are there and they got every light in the house on, so.
Yeah.
Well, when you're not having to pay your electric bill, I guess it doesn't matter how many lights you have on.
Well, but technically you do pay your electric bill because.
The, the other source of, the other source of information may be, the Smith College has an observatory on the top of, uh. What's it, Poplar Hill Road at the end, uh, maybe there's a person there that could.
Help me.
Trustees.
That I have.
On some kind of program. Or whatever that will give us information on me, or in conjunction with their program there.
Would you like to reach out to them, Cindy, and see what we can find out?
Me do.
Sure, I can do that. I put it on my list.
Thank you. We keep making your list longer and longer, but that's a great idea, Fred.
Yeah.
I can give you a name, Cindy.
Oh.
Oh, that would be so helpful.
We have a Smith College connection. Oh, yes.
Do, I mean, I don't have a, a connection to the astronomy department, but I know the name of the person who's in it.
Oh, that'd be great. If you want to email me their contact information, thank you so much.
Sure.
Okay, so, um, Union Thirty, we're taking a break from music for the summer, but. Yesterday we hosted our first uh, drop-in family pay group coordinated with the Union Thirty-Eight Family Network and we had a good turnout. Or this was Monday, we had a good turnout. We had about. Ten families join us and they, some of them stayed afterwards and checked out books and just hung out and enjoyed the library. Um, so that's going to be ongoing from Mondays in July and August. And then on Monday, we have, uh, the Mass Autobots Society is coming through, uh, the Acadia Wildlife. Portion of the Mass Autobots Society is coming to do their terrific turtles program. So it's going to be an Acadia Wildlife Expert and they're going to bring PETA, their box turtle with them. You can look at the PETA, the box turtle, but you cannot pet the box turtle, but they are bringing box turtle shells, so there will be shells. That you can pick up and touch and look at, and they're going to read a couple of stories about box turtles and how they are in Massachusetts and how they're actually. Endangered here in Massachusetts, and then there's going to be a little craft to go along with that. And that's on Monday, and there's been a lot of excitement about that. A lot of parents are really excited.
Cool.
So.
We are, after all, the, the town that, you know, is the home of the Ninja Turtles, too.
That, oh, that's true. I totally forgot about that. You're right.
Turtle to the event.
Yeah, so that's on Monday at one-thirty for anyone who'd like to stop by and meet the turtles.
Okay.
And then I have three event schedules in August. And um, we're already looking into the fall and I've already been discussing with a couple of. Uh, presenters, the possibility of if we were to write a, would you be interested if we got a cultural council grant and coming and doing a few classes? Or workshops on, you know. The, um, what, the things that there. So Kat now who came in. Jean, there's a positive response to her, so I've already reached out to her to say, you know, if we were to collaborate together and do a cultural council grant. Would you be interested in doing a series of your programs spread out over, you know, two or three, depending upon funding? You know, like one in the fall, one in the spring, so that I'm starting to work on fall programming.
That's great.
Very good, very good, Cindy, very good.
Thank you. Is now when I ask for my funding request or do I wait till new business?
Yeah, uh, no, absolutely, um, because it's future programming.
Yes, so I reached out, I was asked to reach out to the Friends Group first regarding funding for programming. I reached out to the Friends Group. A while ago regarding Monday's program, hoping to have had an answer, yes or no, or find you. Have not received an answer, so I'm hoping that I can use a hundred and sixty-eight dollars from general donations to have PETA come. The box turtle.
Do you need a vote from us, Cindy?
If it's okay with you guys, I'm just going to go ahead and do it.
I don't see anybody shaking their heads horizontally. It's all vertical.
All vertical.
That's a good sign. Okay.
Okay.
Is that it?
That was it, and was there something? I think that's it. If I think of anything else, I'll let you know.
Yeah, and I think Cindy also, you and I talked about, um, the possibility of expanding uh, our purchase of passes to various.
Oh, that was the other, yes, that was the other thing. I've reached out, I've received response from. Two of the five places that I had on my list for passes. So the exciting news is, thanks to a generous donation from an anonymous donor and M and T Bank. For the remainder of this year, it's free admission to the Braderboro Art Museum. So they're going to send me the necessary paperwork or whatever. Pass or whatever is needed so that we can add that one to our collection. So that's for the rest of this year. You can, your entire family can go up to Braderboro to the art museum and get in for free.
So, in your next um, blast out to the public, you should mention.
I'm going to put that in there.
That we might have.
Yes.
I asked Cindy to look into, what else did, did, did we, we talked about?
Like, the only other response I got today was Magic Wings and I'm not sure that, um. So the way Magic Wings works is the pass does not have an expiration date. You purchase. For a hundred and forty dollars, you purchase a ten punch ticket. But how it works is it's one punch per person. So say Bob, you and Mary Ellen wanted to take Nan. One of you could get in on the punch, the other one was paying admission and for them, the adults and for the child. And it's good until all ten punches are gone and it's a hundred and forty dollars. Um, so I don't know if that's something that we want to think about and consider. We're about the only library in the area that currently does not have a Magic Wings pass.
So can you only use one punch each time? I mean, could Bob and his wife do two punches or you just?
Well, they could go, so if you, so say you check the pass out and you go today, it's one punch. And then pay the price of two admissions. If you go tomorrow, another, you, then Mary Ellen can get the punch, but then Bob and.
Division.
Then it's still to the price for two admissions.
Okay. Is it something that you, you think would have, um?
Uh, we've gotten a lot of patrons asking if we have it and then being disappointed that we haven't because it's one of those ones where. It's somewhat, you know, if it's available, it's great, and other libraries, if it's already checked out, then so.
Okay, do, do you want?
It never ends. If we.
Once the ten, well, once the ten punches are gone, that part is done, and then you would pay another hundred and forty dollars to renew it. To get another punch card for ten, so it could be theoretically, it could be something that's every two or three years, depending upon. How popular the Butterfly Museum is. I tend to believe it would be more popular during vacation times when the children are home from school and. Caregivers are looking for something fun to do, especially in the wintertime when it's cold.
Or on break from camp, like I go to camp.
Yeah, or on break from camp.
Yeah, I have, I have a confession. I've never been to Magic Wings. Oh, I have been to.
Well, there you go.
We need to get the pass for you, Bob.
Yes, it could be our first punch.
Listen, I did a conference uh, for the Holocaust Museum at the University of Florida in Gainesville, and they have a butterfly museum and I actually went to that one. But I've never been to the one up the street.
It's really, it's, it's a wonderful place, uh, and I've.
I agree.
I agree.
Especially in the middle of winter.
Would you, would, would, would you like, um, us to give you permission to, to purchase?
Uh-oh.
Cindy, you're muted.
You're muted, Bob.
And so is Bob.
Yes.
You're muted, Bob.
Okay.
Okay, there we go.
He said the, the host muted me.
Sorry, that was.
It's because you haven't visited the Deerfield Magic.
No, no, that was me. That, that was entirely on me. That was nothing, uh, oh, and about you, Bob.
You mentioned, you mentioned sort of a general donation fund. How much is left in that? What do we have?
That's about three, that we have a little over three thousand dollars in that account, but it doesn't have to come from general donations. This is. Because it's a museum pass, it's something we could take the hundred and forty dollars out of the Friends Restricted Donation. We could take it out of state aid.
Let's take it out of general donations.
Okay.
Money. Are, are we all okay on that? By the pass?
Absolutely.
Okay. By the butterfly museum, awesome.
I, I may be the first one to use it. I don't.
Okay.
It's, it's speaking of, going back to the Smith College Conservatory, Observatory, whatever it's called, do they have a, a program for. Where they charge a fee to, to do something there? I, I don't know. Deborah, if you know that.
I have no idea. I know that the astronomy program often uses the UMass Observatory. I didn't know McCleish had something going on up there.
Or is it just for students that, or whatever that study it to go there? Maybe that's, if you're looking to. Talk to that person or they have a program that.
Well, you're looking for somebody to come and give a talk, right, about the night sky.
Yeah.
Yeah, and so that, you know, that, I'm not, I, I'm certain that somebody will know somebody who would do that. I could think of a grad student. I mean, I think it's UMass that has the PhD program in astronomy and the other colleges use their facilities. There are undergrad courses in all the colleges, uh, but I can, I can give Cindy a name who can then give a name.
I, I think it would be fantastic if Cindy doesn't mind looking into it. Um, there's supposedly a comet that may appear this, to the naked eye this fall.
Oh, cool.
Well, it's unknown yet, in, until it gets a little closer to see how much of the tail is going to form and how visible it's going to be.
Probably on election day.
That's not the, the disappearing asteroid, right? The one that's, that's crumbling as it comes closer and closer?
I don't think so. This is a, I, this is a comet that they say, I thought it was end of September, October timeframe, that may. May appear, but they, it's hard to say what it's going to do.
Okay. All right, so Cindy, you got all kinds of, of stuff you can hand out for you now.
Well, it would.
Um, we're moving on to, um, Bob and I were just talking about the, 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 our, whatever we called it last year, our, our gathering after. Thanksgiving and before.
Holiday party and tree lighting, right?
Holiday party and tree lighting, right, and um, we need to put that on our radar once again. Um, I don't know, uh, if you wanted to pick a day for that, um, Sunday, December first.
That's what I was looking at.
So shall we begin plans for Sunday, December first, and we will send out, um. I'll send an email to Sheila because I, I know that the Friends used to be involved, but. Hell or high water, we're going to do this and we're going to light the holiday tree that day as well. Um, if we don't have a Friends group, we're going to, we're going to do it just like we did it last year. Okay, okay, so we will, um. Have more information for you about, um, the planning of that, but I just wanted to put it on everybody's radar, okay? And the last thing I had was updates on minute, meeting minutes and. Okay, and the last thing I had was updates on minute, meeting minutes and I already told you that we have to sign them now and. It just, I guess that's, um, the policies, so, um, we'll take care of all of that. Uh, is there any other new business or any business?
What's the status of the flooring?
Oh, have not heard back, good question, let me check on that, um. So I will make, I will add to my note to rattle their cage as well.
Okay, is there any other new business? If not, I will, um, entertain a motion to actually adjourn at the time we say we're going to adjourn, so there's no. No Nixonian questions about.
I'm not going to talk.
Minutes. Okay, is there a motion to adjourn? Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
And I'm assuming that there are no people opposed to adjourning, we need to just say that our next meeting, if we go by how we always do it, second Wednesday is the fourteenth of August. I can't stand that we're already in.
Um, I may not be here on that day, but I won't know right away.
Okay.
Um, okay.
Thank you very much.
Six o'clock as usual.
Six o'clock as usual, yep.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you all, good night.
Good night.
Good night.